Good evening. It is Monday, July 14th. I'd like to call this regular school board meeting to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Got a pretty full house tonight. That's always exciting to see. A different face up here on the dais. Mr. Farnsworth filling in for the superintendent this evening. Moving on to item two, changes, amendments, additions, or deletions. Board, do we have any changes this evening?
No, sir.
Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, do you have any changes this evening?
There are no changes.
All right. Seeing that, we'll keep the agenda as presented. Item 3.01, Mr. Farnsworth, do you have a recommendation on the minutes?
Yes, recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop, June 16th, 2025, and regular school board meeting, June 23rd, 2025.
移動
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Dr. Luke. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0. Representation, we have none this evening. We do have several public input cards, so we're going to go through these in the order we received them. First up, Mr. Vance Yoakam.
Well, greetings. My personal parking lot still hasn't been approved out there, so I had to find regular parking. Congratulations to the board and Mr. Mathias and the superintendent and the interim superintendent for getting the A district rating. That's great. That's one thing checked off for Mr. Mathias, and I think that's great compared to... I can remember when the superintendent interviewed and she came in and she told the board at that time, "It's kind of disgraceful," probably my interpretation of what I'm reading between the lines, "that they only had 70% graduation rate." And now, what is it up to?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. So, and an A district, so congratulations to everybody. All right, so one is I wanted to recommend, because I read that you guys are suffering a budget shortfall, and I would suggest that you adopt what Larry Metz did when he was a chair here back in something like 2005 or '06, '07, '08, is he had hearings where he went through every line item on the budget, and he had the manager over that unit come in here and explain and justify what that budget level was. And I think that you should consider that, especially if you watch the DOGE hearings and you see that the Florida DOGE group is starting to extend their their hands out to counties, cities, districts, and that there may be some things coming out of that county. So, anyways, I just wanted to give you a little update on AI and encourage you to do some things. I do have a handout here which I can give. And pass it around, and that's because I don't have enough time, I realize, to cover all those items, but since the district mentioned that, is AI going to replace your current and recent students and jobs? There's been a lot of evidence coming out about the downfall of trades, school, and actions on that part. And when you have the Chair of Nvidia making statements on the news, and they're the company that makes the chips that run AI, and they have to build all these new data centers, and they can't find enough people because most schools are not training people in the trades anymore, nowhere near what is needed. And secondly, they're probably going to be the last ones to be replaced by AI. There are already many studies coming out, and it's talking about placement of jobs with AI. And so I encourage you to read this handout and to come up with an action plan to help your students survive the coming change in the economy.
Thank you, Mr. Yoakam. Next up, Ms. Elizabeth Emery, LCEA.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Deputy Superintendent, Chairperson Brandenburg, and the school board. It's been an honor to serve Lake County Public Schools as LCA Vice President for these past four years, and I'm excited to begin this new chapter as LCA President. I wanted to share a little bit more about me. Obviously, we've gotten some time to get to know each other in that short period, but I wanted to make it a little more personal today so y'all could get to know me a little better. I'm a proud, third-generation Floridian, born here in Lake County. My journey with Lake County Schools actually began as a baby in this boardroom. My parents brought me to a school board meeting in the '90s. And as a student at Eustis Elementary, where I fell in love with learning, thanks to teachers like Ms. High, Ms. Goss, Ms. Balltunis, and Ms. Boston. We did amazing things like decorate our entire classroom in the flora and fauna of the Amazon rainforest. But I also remember struggling with reading, and I feared failing the FCAT. I begged to be placed in Mr. Skinner's class because even at nine, I was aware of high-stakes testing, and I knew the impact of a really high-impact grade teacher. In middle school, I attended Eustis Middle School with saxophone from Mr. Ricky. The jazz band was just incredible, and I so desperately wanted to be a part of the jazz band. And my students and my colleagues know I love jazz. I signed up for tryouts for both years, seventh and eighth grade, but I was so scared of failure that I skipped the tryouts both years in a row. But I actually happened to find my voice and find my place. I ended up becoming drum major, and I joined student government and discovered a love of math and science that carried me all the way to the University of Florida. At Eustis High School, teachers like Mr. Cruz, Mr. Watson, Mr. Hilding, and Ms. Liberati didn't just teach, they believed in me. They helped me see my potential and inspired me to become an educator. After college, I returned to Lake County because I wanted to give back to the community that gave so much to me. And the truth is, I didn't grow up being a union leader. I didn't dream about this as a little girl. From the very beginning, there was only one thing I wanted to do. But even after I stepped in the classroom, it took time for me to fully embrace that I was meant to be an educator. That voice of doubt that once carried with me through childhood was there, and it made it hard for me to feel like I belonged. But through the encouragement and inspiration from my colleagues, mentors, and students, I came to understand that being an educator and advocating for public education is one of the most powerful ways to serve my community. So today, I stand before you not just as LCA President, but as a proud product of Lake County Public Schools, shaped by its classrooms, its teachers, and its values. I'm committed to working alongside you to ensure every student and educator has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to doing amazing things together in this incredible A district. Thank you.
All done, Elizabeth. Thank you, and we're very excited to work with you as well. Next up, Jessica Sawicki, LCEA New Vice President.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, Deputy Superintendent, and community members. On behalf of Lake County Education Association, I want to extend our congratulations to everyone in our district, educators, staff, administrators, students, families, and community members for the tremendous accomplishment of becoming an A-rated district. The recognition is a result of dedication, passion, and countless hours of hard work from every corner of our school system. We also want to thank the school board for including us in the process with the internal auditors. We appreciate the opportunity to share feedback on the survey and had a productive conversation with them. We especially want to recognize and thank Superintendent Carnegie, Scott Ward, Rob Oyer, and Maricel Santiago for continuing to collaborate with LCA. According to our state-level contacts, Lake County is leading the way when it comes to union district collaboration. Many of our peers and neighboring counties are not experiencing the same level of respect and partnership, and we do not take that for granted. That said, we can't ignore the serious challenges facing public education. Vouchers and charter expansions continue to divert funding from our school, public schools to institutions that operate with far less oversight and accountability. Despite these obstacles, our educators and support staff are doing incredible work to support our students, regardless of what the school grade says. We also want to be clear, and overemphasis on standardized testing as a primary measure of success does not reflect the value, the full value of what our educators do each day. Our students are more than a score, and our schools are more than a letter grade. We must also continue to advocate for real support from the state, not just in terms of funding our classrooms, but in helping cover the rising cost of healthcare for our educators and support staff. No one should have to choose between keeping their job and affording necessary medical care. We must be honest, Lake County would not be an A district without the dedication of our educators and support staff. But too many are working second or even third jobs to make ends meet. The cost of living for one child and one adult in Florida is over $61,000. Yet, the average teacher's salary in Lake County is just over $52,000. That gap is not sustainable. Passion cannot pay the bills. We need to reward the people doing the work of making our schools exceptional. We must continue to advocate for fair pay for resources and policies that support public education. And we must engage our state representatives and make sure they understand how their decisions directly impact our classrooms. Thank you again for your partnership and for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Sawicki. Next up, Ms. Leland Theroe.
Terrio.
Terrio, I tried.
You got really close. I'm Leland Theroe. I'm president of the Lake Community Arts. We are a 501(c)(3) whose mission is to nurture creativity and connection through accessible and inclusive performing arts programs for all. Through music performance and collaboration, we inspire participation, foster artistic growth, and enrich the cultural life of our community. We've partnered with your school system to host the Orlando Philharmonic Orchestra's Young People's Concerts, which will take place in November. Lake Mineola High School will host the South Lake fifth graders on Thursday, November 13th, and Leesburg High School will host the North Lake students on Friday, November 14th. This board will be receiving invitations to participate in two VIP events that are leading up to this. The first will be on September 16th at 9:30 at the Dr. Phillips Center for the Performing Arts, and the second at Lake Mineola High School on Thursday, November 13th at 9:30, just prior to the children's concert there at the high school. I am in contact with Stacy Doratti at the Transportation Department to arrange the field trip buses. I want to thank your superintendent, who, by the way, is spectacular, for securing $25,000 in grants from Walt Disney World. Otherwise, none of this would be happening. In addition, the Orlando Philharmonic philanthropic arm has contributed an additional $15,000. We would like to recognize Amy Conrad and her friend Katie Cassidy from the Orlando Philharmonic for their part in that. We are actively seeking another $10,000 from members of the community at large to cover the transportation costs for the event. Lake Community Arts will be supporting Lake County Schools in the future with other live performances, host events such as the Honors Choir and Lake County Choirs of Distinction. I also want to give a shout out to music educators Rosemary Pilonero at the Villages Elementary at Lady Lake, thank you, and Ruthie Antman at Lost Lake Elementary for having already run much of the legwork on this project. Also, thanks to Kristy Zubba, who provided direction and contacts as a conduit to your schools. I look forward to this and more collaborations between Lake Community Arts and Lake County Schools. If you would like to sing with us in our chorus, you should come to the Claremont Arts and Recreation Center on August 19th at 6:30. It is non-audition, and we would love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Theroe. Next up, Ms. Rosemary Pilonero.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Rosemary Pilonero. I'm the music teacher at the Villages Elementary of Lady Lake, and I'm here to speak to you tonight about some background of Lake County's involvement with the Orlando Philharmonic Orchestra's Young People's Concert. Each year, the Orlando Philharmonic goes above and beyond to create a performance especially geared for students. Even the pandemic didn't stop them, as the 2020 concert was virtual. My school was awarded a grant for fourth and fifth graders, students, to participate, and the students absolutely loved it. Watching the different instruments that they had previously learned about come alive on the screen was mesmerizing. The incorporation of ballet and opera only added to their excitement and to the experience. I was surprisingly overwhelmed by the joy and positive reactions that I received from the kids, and I can only imagine what a joyous outcome will result from live performance to come. As a past president in the Florida Elementary Music Educators Association and current member of the Orlando Philharmonic Orchestra Education Committee, it brings me great excitement to see this endeavor come to fruition. This has been a long time in the making with much assistance and support from arts-supportive residents and Lake County District officials. While I am very grateful for all of the outside support, I must give thanks to our superintendent for ensuring that music education is provided in every Lake County school. When Ms. Carnegie called me in early June to find out what the financials were necessary to make this work, I was overwhelmed with excitement. I'm like, why is the superintendent calling me? And I just, I was so excited that this was actually taking a step forward. And while it is not possible to have the students attend at the beautiful Dr. Phillips Center this year, I appreciate the support of having the orchestra come over to Lake County this fall. And I would love to see this blossom into having all of our fifth graders attend the event in Orlando next year and in years to come, as is the case in Orange County and several other counties that surround the Orlando area. And just this past year, I had a conversation with a student who asked me if I ever saw an orchestra perform live, and it made me realize what a special experience it would be for these kids. And it could, it could very well be a once-in-a-lifetime event. I'm very excited that our students will have the opportunity to experience a live performance this fall. And finally, I'm proud to be a music teacher here in Lake County and can't wait to see what other future opportunities our students will have in the arts. As we say on my campus, "Together we can," and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pilonero, and congratulations on your part in making V-E-L-L and A back where they belong. I do. I still have V-E-L-L in my head from the celebration of the anniversary. Next up, Ms. Ruthie Antman.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Ruthie Antman, and I'm the music teacher at Lost Lake Elementary and a member of the Orlando Philharmonic Education Committee. I'm here to speak to you about the impact of the Young People's Concert on my students. Last November, I took a group of my students to this concert at the Dr. Phillips Center, and their response was unforgettable. I saw for myself the delight on their faces at seeing the beautiful Dr. Phillips Center, the ooze and oz as they watched the ballet dancers perform with the orchestra, and the moment of clarity when the opera singers performed, and the students related that to their own singing and thought, maybe one day I can do that, too. After the field trip, I asked the students to write reflections, and some of their insights included, "The music came alive for me." I was so inspired by the singers, and it was so much fun to see this performance, and I learned so much about the music. Before teaching in Lake County, I taught in Orange County at an elementary school in a coe, and I was able to experience the access that those students had to the Young People's Concert. Every third, fourth, and fifth grader every year in Orange County is able to attend, as well as other counties. At this particular school, it was a school without a lot of parental support, with quite a few students whose families were of a lower socioeconomic status, and many of these students would never have been able to see an orchestra concert, opera, or ballet live on their own, just with their families. Watching these students get dressed to the nines to go to the Young People's Concert was so meaningful to me because it was such a great equalizer in their access to music and culture. Those students, and my current students who attended the concert this past school year, learned so many music standards, a counted over 40, in an infinitely more meaningful way by seeing the performance live than they would have by simply talking about those concepts in the classroom without the context provided by this concert. Educational resources for these standards are provided for teachers ahead of time to deepen the students' learning. I believe that all our Lake County students are deserving of this opportunity, that this equal access to the arts is important to Lake County schools, and that providing all Lake County fifth graders with this experience is the next step in demonstrating that commitment. I'm so grateful for our superintendent and the work that she's done to help make that happen, and for all of your support as well. Thank you for your consideration of and attention to this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Antman. And last, but certainly not least, Farmer Banks.
Farmer Banks, Helfrich, Clayroe District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day. Now, in the humid and hot weather season that we're in, you can still grow crops, such things as watermelon, black-eyed peas, okra, sweet potatoes, and also, believe it or not, loofahs will grow quite well. Chairman, Board, distinguished guests, welcome to July. July is the birth month of our country. We are 249 years old, the longest-serving current government charter in the history of humankind. So what does that mean to be an American? If you look to your person on your left and you look to the person on your right, if you look at yourself in the mirror, every single one of us is from somewhere else. In fact, even the Native Americans came over on the Bering Strait many centuries before our forefathers, foremothers, came over on the Atlantic Ocean. We are Mexican, we are Cuban, we are Afghanistani, we are Canadian. We are a hodgepodge of peoples from around the world. We are an experiment in bringing cultures together unlike any other nation in the world to live, to work, to play, to govern, to worship, and ultimately, to love together. So, the next time you hear someone disparage an immigrant, remember, they are talking about every single one of us. I am Farmer Banks Helfrich. Thank you for allowing me to speak. May you all be blessed.
Thank you, Farmer Banks. All right. Any other public input cards we missed this evening?
Yeah.
Come on up. Ms. Amy Conrad.
Hello. My name is Amy Conrad, and I am the Director of Education and Community at the Orlando Philharmonic Orchestra. I'm so excited to be here and represent this organization in support of the Young People's Concerts reaching all fifth graders here in Lake County. This program has been around for over 35 years and has continued to grow and improve to meet the needs of our students. Six years ago, we went through an extensive evaluation program to improve the Young People's Concert. We know what the students enjoy, what the students want to know, how long they can sit still. We know what captures their attention and what doesn't, and we've improved it every year since. We work with the Orlando Ballet, the Opera Orlando, local theater groups, and of course, the orchestra to put on a well-rounded 45-minute program that we know the students will love. We work with 10 Central Florida elementary school music teachers, including two of them who are in this room today, to come up with lesson plans that the students will see in their classroom before coming to the concert so they are well-prepared and engaged through the whole program. We know if the students know the songs before they enter the room, they'll be more engaged through the program. We've worked hard to make this program valuable, meaningful, educational, exciting, and fun. The students of Lake County deserve to see this program, not only this year, but every year. We invite you to come and witness this incredible event and join the Lake County Students in Song on November 13th. I am so lucky to get to work with the people in this room to bring this program to the fifth graders in Lake County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Anyone else?
I was doing sign language. I want to invest in this, so if you can touch base with me.
Moving on to reports this evening, item 6.01, the Education Foundation Report, Dr. Elizabeth Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman, school board members, Mr. Farnsworth. First and foremost, congratulations on being recognized as an A school district. Super excited to be a part of that and to be able to celebrate the hard work. As you can tell, the summer is flying by, and we are two weeks away from Stepping Out for Education, which is scheduled for July 25th and 26th. It's going to be a fantastic event under the big top, and it's also the last week to submit votes for the Influencer Award. New this year, each of the dancers selected a Lake County Schools program or initiative that those Influencer dollars go towards, so if you have not selected a dancer, there's one in the room. But no pressure there. Red for Ed is underway as well, and we have 27 local businesses participating as collection sites. Additionally, our online supply drive continues to take traction as an option for individuals looking to shop without going in person anywhere. We are looking forward to our pep rallies for public education, where we will weigh in the collected school supplies. On July 31st, we will be in South Lake, and then on August 1st, we will be in Taveries. Both days will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and include a food truck, so I look forward and hope to see you all there. Our sponsors for these pep rallies include McCree Contractors and Seabert Tax Services. So excited to have those new sponsors. Leading up to Red for Ed, we are hosting a number of school supply sorting days and packing backpacks to be distributed to the elementary schools. As I did not expect this, but let me tell you, I am completely validated in what I'm about to share. We are excited to have worked with the superintendent to secure the $25,000 grant funding from Disney, and so if I had any question, all of y'all shared great remarks, and I was taking lots of notes. So, congratulations. Really excited to be able to provide that opportunity for our fifth graders. That is an event that I've attended before, and it really is transformational. We are also continuing with the New World's Reading Initiative this year. Our first event is actually this Saturday for parent and family members. We're starting off early. We'll be hosting breakfast for the registered attendees and providing a great workshop ahead of the Leesburg Back-to-School Bash. And then our second event will be July 31st, prior to the Claremont Pep Rally at South Lake Cares. This year, we will be hosting six events total, which is less than the eight events prior. They just have made some changes grant-wise, but excited to host those. And then lastly, a little bit about our Take Stock in Children program. They received the highest level of recognition from the state, earning the Luminary Award for exceeding all of our benchmark metrics and maintaining its status as a gold-standard program. So the staff will be recognized and celebrated in early August as we attend the annual Back-to-School Summit, so proud of that work. And then they are continuing to do some great outreach efforts to recruit new mentors, as well as students, and planning a number of kickoff events for the school year and new student orientations. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Excellent report, as always. Item 6.02, Attorney Report, easy enough. Moving on to tabs evening. Mr. Cole, item 7.01.
Yes, sir. At the regular meeting on June 23rd, 2025, Dr. Luke had abstained from the vote on item 10.02. That was the dual enrollment agreement with Lake Sumter College on the basis that it potentially could inure to the special gain or loss of her employer, Lake Sumter State College. So this is to confirm that she has filed the appropriate Form 8B memorandum of voting conflict.
Perfect. And then 7.02.
Similar item. At that same meeting, Mr. Dodd abstained from votes on the same item, voting on the same item because he also is employed with Lake Sumter State College, and he has also filed his Form 8B.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. All right. Consent Agenda. Mr. Deputy Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval of the Consent Agenda items 8.01 through 9.03.
移動
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Mrs. Cunningham. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0. All right. Skipping down to the discussion agenda this evening, item 11.01, a public hearing for tentative approval, Mr. Cole.
Yes, sir. At this time, we are opening a public hearing for tentative approval of new policy 9271, Personalized Education Program, PEP Students. At this time, is there any public input on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Deputy Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, recommend tentative approval of new policy 9271, Personalized Education Programs, PEP Students.
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Mrs. Cunningham. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This policy, it says it's a new policy, tentative approval, new policy, but it's it's got edits on it.
Yeah, those edits are from Neola. You know, Neola develops the policies. Those are the changes.
The changes of 2024 from Neola, so those are...
They were there.
Neola's editing its own policy and then giving it to us as a new policy.
Correct.
I definitely see the need for the policy. It was just confusing to see the editing remarks, and then it was a new policy, so I was making sure that I didn't miss something ahead of time. Okay.
Good question. I had a similar one earlier.
And these are our, those are Neola's edits, not Lake County's. And these are our, our, those are Neola's edits, not Lake County Schools edits, correct?
Right, and you are approving, if you're happy with those edits.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Moving on, 11.02, public hearing for final approval of the 2025-2026 Student Progression Plan. Mr. Cole.
Yes, sir. At this time, again, we'll open the meeting to a public hearing for final approval of the 2025-2026 Student Progression Plan. Is there any public input on this item? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Deputy Superintendent.
Recommend final approval of the 25-26 Student Progression Plan.
Salute.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Mathias, second by Dr. Luke. Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. And lastly, item 11.03, Public Hearing. Mr. Cole.
Yes, sir. This time, we'll open the meeting to a public hearing for final approval of the 2025-2026 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide. At this time, is there any public input on this? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Deputy Superintendent.
Recommend final approval of the 2025-26 Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide.
Salute.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Mathias, second by Mrs. Cunningham. Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. And hopefully, the last time I need to say this this evening, Mr. Deputy Superintendent, do you have a report?
Ms. Cornegy did not leave me with a report. However, I would like to just take a second to thank all of our teachers, staff, administrators, our wonderful board that sits up here, and the best superintendent in the state of Florida, Mrs. Diane Cornegy. Congratulate everyone on Lake County Schools becoming an A school district.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Luke, do you have any comments this evening?
Hang on one second. I'm sorry, I do have one letter of condolence that was sent, so. Alum Tussing, teacher at Eustace Middle and daughter of Rebecca Tussing, certified school counselor from East Ridge High School.
And also the daughter of the Air Force JRO TC teacher at Leesburg High School, Mr. Tussing. Dr. Luke.
Just to follow up on Mr. Farnsworth's comments, I was kind of looking over the data for the schools in my region, and there were some, so many things to be proud of in the data. I had several schools that were just one or two percentage points from being the next letter grade, be it a B or be it an A, and some major improvements in some of our schools. Sorrento made significant improvements, Eustace made some significant improvements. Everybody seems to be doing great work, and, and it's certainly, when you scroll through Facebook and you see people speaking positively about Lake County Schools and the schools in the district, it's very refreshing for, to see. Like, I'll just leave that right there. And I, I have been thinking very intentionally about how to graciously say this, because in a time of such celebration, I also just, I want us to tell a story in a way that doesn't continue to pit public versus charter or school versus school, because I don't care what your school grade was, the schools in Lake County are doing amazing work. The students in Lake County are working hard, our parents are working hard, we're working hard with less. We're working, parents are working harder with less, we, as public schools are working harder with less. And while we need to celebrate, I mean, I even went so far back as to look, since the superintendent has started and the headway we're making with improving our school, you know, I know that's been on all of our minds, the, the people that have 10 years of tenure on the board, we've been striving for an A for those entire 10 years, and so what a celebratory moment to finally get there, especially after the COVID setback. So we were progressing very nicely on our way, and then COVID happened, and it seemed to set back, but every year, we just continue to make these strides forward. So, hooray, like, it did, you know, my teacher heart joy, and data can certainly help us to define things and to be intentional about planning for the school year, but data tells us what, one story, one picture, and our students are more than that, which you said very nicely earlier. And so I, I just want to continue to commend this entire district, including every member of the stakeholder community, on the work that we continue to do, and take this congratulations and move it forward and continue to improve, but to do it in such a way that tells a story about what the, the great work that everybody is doing. So, thank you.
Very well said. Mrs. Cunningham.
Whenever the grades come out, it's an especially interesting day for me. Of course, I first checked all the schools that I was a part of that faculty at one time to see how they did, and then I checked the schools in my area, and then I checked overall. And Jessica can identify with this, because we were once flamingos together, and we know what it's like to come back and experience the kind of pleasure they are this year with going up two-letter grades and getting, getting an A. But I think the greatest thing about that is, and unless you're a teacher, and unless you have done the work, you don't quite get that feeling of accomplishment, that pride when you look back and you can look at kids and you can say, they're better. They're going to be better citizens of the United States because I did something to help them. And that's a pride that no one can take. And I have to tell you, it looks a little different sitting on the board. I am very lucky and fortunate to have known it as a teacher, and then as a principal, and now as a board member, and I can tell you, with each change in position, it becomes more and more cherished. So I'd like to offer my sincere congratulations to every single individual, including those community leavers, who bring things in like ballet and music for our students, because you play a part, too. And all of those things make for a well-rounded student, which causes them to be able to do well in school. So there is no small person, there is no person that only supplemented. There are all people who contributed and made this possible. So I say the congratulations is to all of us, all the citizens of Lake County, as well as those citizens of other counties that come to our county and help us. And just like with any high, there's always a low, and I am very saddened this evening to share with you the passing of Dr. Thomas Sanders. Many of you will remember him. He was twice-elected superintendent here in Lake County. He was the gentleman who gave me my first administrative job, and I had the pleasure of, he called it coffee, but I don't drink coffee, so we chatted a few weeks ago, and he had become very frail, but he still had the mind of an educator. And the one thing that he said to me that was memorable is, you guys are doing a good job, Molly. Don't ever lose sight of what's important. So that is what I would say to you tonight. We're doing a good job. We don't ever need to lose sight of what's important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mr. Mathias.
So it was 2012 when I was going to move a manufacturing company from Orlando to Leesburg. We were one month away from the move, and the three leaders of that organization came to me and said their wives would not let them come here because of our schools. Now, I will tell you that it was jarring at first, but I started looking at the district and decided to run for school board. And that's what Vance is talking about, is at that time, when I ran, I had five objectives. The last one was that we would be an A-rated school district. As most of you know, I won't be running again, so I have to tell you that my scorecard is complete and, and a job well done, but it doesn't come without a lot of effort. And you board members that were on here and the superintendent, we grow oak trees, not perennials, and that planting the seed early, kindergarten to third grade, that base, this board voted for additional funding. The superintendent with her leadership, with recog, uh, early recognition of kids in need, and bringing up what we call, we have a common term, lower quartile, where you can't be in a district unless you bring the lower part up. The middle's going to do okay, and the high's going to do okay, and we brought the best and brightest to schools that are now, really, really superior. And, and those are decisions and leadership that can't go without mentioning to our superintendent. She did it, and, and I'm proud of this board for supporting her. Sometimes getting out of the way is the right thing to do, just for the record. So it's a great deal of pride that I have. I've never been in a classroom. Kids scare me, just so y'all know. On that book day when you read, oh my gosh, no. It's there next time, but anyway. But I do know what it means for economic development. I know what it means for this county, and that when that business is going to move here, or if they're going to expand, that mom's going to say, holy smokes, they got good schools. That's what's going to happen, folks. So I'm proud to be part of it.
Spoken like a true educator.
And Tom Sanders was an amazing person, and he will be missed, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. It's always ditto at the end with this board, but very excited to, to share the news as well. You know I never miss a moment to brag on Leesburg, and our Leesburg schools showed up big again this year. Beverly Shores have 100 total points, Treadway jumped from a C to an A, and the Villages Elementary, Lady Lake, jumping back from a B to an A. And overall, the district just had unbelievable results, and it's a testament to everybody in this room and everybody in our community, and Mr. Mathias had in his comments as well. But this board has done a very good job, in my opinion, of focusing on what matters, but also knowing when to get out of the way and let our leadership team do their work. We do have the best superintendent in the state of Florida, and we also have the best leadership cabinet and district-level team in the state of Florida as well, and all of that goes into the success and continues to work down to the regional level, to the school level, and into the classroom for every single student. So very proud to serve on the sport alongside the four of you, including Mr. Dodd, who is on the Ivy League tour with his son this week, looking at colleges, and alongside the rest of our staff, but very well-deserved honor for a very wonderful school district, and looking forward to continue growing again next year. Ms. Mathias, you look like you've got something else to add. Go ahead.
So I gave that warm fuzzy. I want to give one quick cold prickly. Everything I spoke about a few minutes ago of raising that lower quartile, those largely were funded through federal dollars that are currently frozen. So let's all say a prayer that that gets sorted out before the school year, because without those funds, that hard work will be jeopardized. We'll figure it out, folks, because that's how we roll, but let's make it a little easier. That's all.
Very well said. Any other comments? Any objection to adjourning? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.